Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call for Board of Commissioners' work/business meeting of April 7th to order. I'll be leading the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dan, could you do the roll call, please?
Catherine Carter, President.
Here.
Denise Hall, Commissioner.
Here.
Ms. McNaney, Commissioner. Gregory Mull, Commissioner. Megan Weaver, Assistant Township Manager. Lauren Gallagher, Township Solicitor.
Here.
Nicholas Cross, Township Engineer.
Here.
David Duffy, Chief of Police. Ryan Shapiro, Finance Director. And it is noted that Commissioner Rebecca Moody and Township Manager Sandra Zedell are absent.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, Ms. Conch will do a Library Week presentation. Please come to the podium and make sure the light is a bright green.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us here this evening. As you know, I'm here to represent North Wales Area Library during National Library Week. And I prepared a short presentation. I promise, it's short. National Library Week's theme this year is Drawn to the Library, which speaks to the magnetic pull of libraries and what they do for communities. Libraries are more than book repositories. They're community hubs that attract people for countless reasons. The allure of endless stories and knowledge waiting to be discovered, a safe, welcoming space for everyone regardless of background, free access to resources, technology, and learning opportunities, community programming that brings people together, the guidance of librarians who help navigate informational needs, a quiet sanctuary for focus and reflection in our noisy world. For me personally, Drawn to the Library evokes the feeling of being pulled by an invisible force towards a place that feels like home. Libraries have always been my sanctuary, places where curiosity is rewarded, where I can lose myself in stories. The theme reminds me of how libraries continue to evolve while maintaining their core mission of connecting people with information and each other. Right to Read Day, observed on April 7th during National Library Week, celebrates and affirms the fundamental right of all individuals to access information, literature, and ideas. This observance highlights importance of intellectual freedom and stands against censorship and book banning. Key aspects of Right to Read Day include promoting awareness about challenges to intellectual freedom in communities across the country, supporting the American Library Association's efforts to combat censorship, celebrating diverse voices and perspectives in literature, advocating for equitable access to information for everyone, encouraging communities to engage with banned or challenged books, recognizing libraries as essential institutions that protect the right to read. Right to Read Day serves as a reminder that access to information is a cornerstone of democracy, enabling individuals to make informed decisions and participate fully in civic life. Libraries play a crucial role in preserving this right by providing free access to diverse materials that represent multiple viewpoints and experiences. Remember, read, whether for educational purposes, advocacy, or community engagement. Just do it. You'll thank me. A mystical tribute to library workers. In the realm where knowledge dwells and stories breathe, stand guardians of wisdom, keepers of the sacred leaves, no mere mortals with books in hand, but wizards who command information's grand expanse. Library workers, alchemists, who transform curiosity into gold, navigators of labyrinths where countless tales unfold. With whispered guidance and magical insight, they illuminate paths through darkness with learnings light. When lost in forests of data, bewildered and alone, these mystical guides appear, their expertise shown. With a wave of their hand, chaos become order as they traverse realms beyond every border. They are the silent sentinels who preserve our collective memory, the unsown heroes of humanity's continuing story. Their magic lies not in wands or ancient spells, but in their unwavering service where knowledge dwells. On this National Library Workers' Day, we honor your mystical art, the sacred work you perform with mind, soul, and heart. For in your hands, libraries become portals to infinite worlds where imagination and wisdom are internally unfurled. Thank you to the keepers of the flame, guardians of the written word, for your magic ensures every voice will be heard. Library Outreach Day. Advocacy in action. Take and take action day. In this critical moment when federal funding for libraries faces potential cuts, Library Outreach Day transforms from a celebration into a call of action. Libraries serve as the cornerstone of democracy, providing equal access to information, technology, and community resources for all people regardless of background or circumstance. Help North Wales Library with their postcard campaign. Libraries are not luxuries, but necessities in our community. They provide essential services to job seekers, students, seniors, and families. They bridge the digital divide for those without home internet, offer safe spaces for learning, connection, and community building, serve as disaster response centers during community emergencies, and they support literacy and lifelong learning for all ages. Deliver an extraordinary return on investment. Every dollar invested in a library returns $5 in public value. The proposed cuts to federal library funding would devastate communities like ours. These fund, support critical programs that serve our most vulnerable populations and ensure equitable access to information and opportunity. I urge you to protect federal library funding and stand with the millions of Americans who rely on the library and their services every day. Our community's future depends on it. Together, we can ensure libraries remain funded, accessible, and ready to serve all who need it for future generations to come. The sacred partnership between community and library. In the tapestry of our community, there exists the golden thread that connects us all, our public library. The institution stands not as a mere building of books, but as a living, breathing part of our collective aspirations and shared wisdom. The partnership between our community and our library is over 100 years old, and it is profound. It represents a covenant of trust, that knowledge shall be preserved, that stories shall be shared, that no seeker shall be turned away. This partnership transcends transactions. It is a relationship of mutual nurturing and growth. When you step through the library doors, you enter a space where all are equal to learn, to discover, and to transform. Here, the child exploring their first picture book stands on equal footing with the scholar deep in research. The job seeker refining their resume shares space with the elder discovering digital connection. The newcomer learning our language finds welcome alongside the poet crafting verses. Our library exists because generations before us understood that the community that shares knowledge grows stronger together. Today, this legacy, by support, we support this legacy, not just with funding, but with our presence, our advocacy, and our belief in its mission. As we face the future together, let us strengthen this sacred partnership. Visit, volunteer, advocate, share your stories of how the library has touched your life, and invite others to discover its treasures. Speak up when funding is threatened. The library belongs to all of us, and we all belong to the library. Thank you, and have a great evening. And don't forget to get your Taste tickets. Taste is on Thursday. We hope to see you there. Does anybody have any questions? That was a lot. I have gift bags for you guys.
Thank you. Next up, Laura, were there any executive sessions?
The board did need executive session earlier this evening to discuss matters of personnel and public safety.
Thank you. Before we get to our public comments, at the last session, we had one of our residents, Bill Jackson, who had a concern about West Point Pike rail crossing. Recently, our Assistant Township Manager Megan Weaver was able to finally get an update from SEPTA regarding the West Point Pike rail crossing. They are planning to renew and fully repair this crossing in June, which is wonderful news because the crossing has been deteriorating for a while, and staff and residents have been raising concerns about this. We wanted to do a shout out to her, Megan, and thank her for her tenacity in finally getting SEPTA to do something about this. But Megan also shared with us that she would have never been able to solicit this information without the help of one of our Merck contacts, Greg Landis, who was able to aid Megan in speaking to the right person. We often tell people that Merck is a wonderful community partner and that they often help us out when we are in a lurch, but that usually happens behind the scenes so nobody ever hears about it. So tonight, we just wanted you to hear about it. And thank you so much, Greg Landis, for your help with this contact and for all that you and Merck do for our township. Thank you. Our public comments. Fred Hankin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Just a couple things. I just came to this meeting and realized this is a work session and a business meeting, session combined.
Yes.
Was there any notification made to the public that this is so?
Yes.
When was that? Because I must have missed it. I get all your emails, every single one, so...
Posted on the agenda. The township routinely takes action at the work session when needed.
Yeah, but this is a combined meeting, though.
Posted on the agenda.
It was on the website that this is going to be a combined meeting? Then I missed that. Could someone tell me what happened to the gazebo? It's torn down, obviously. Like, was it in disrepair? I mean, we were, I know it was kind of like whatever, but it was not fixable in any way, shape, or form?
The wood was rotting out, and there were, I believe there was a termite infestation. So it had to be removed for safety reasons.
I mean, I remember it was, I don't, I'm sorry.
No, no, and then the time capsule has been stored.
That's my third question.
I know.
I don't know if anyone knew there was one there, but I...
No, the third, yes, the time, well, we're well aware that it's there, and that was, is put in safekeeping until we're ready to, but nobody's going to open it or anything.
Oh, I wasn't concerned about that.
Yeah, so it's...
Interesting, just, I don't remember exactly what, but I remember, I guess I'm a little concerned that that gazebo was built out of steel, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, I was here when they were doing all that, and I just can't imagine after 30 years that was torn down already. I know something's unforeseeable, I understand that, but...
The problem was that it was actually a liability and a hazard for us. You could push your finger right through the wood in some spots, so if people were leaning on it for pictures, like often people would too.
That didn't just happen overnight, is my point.
That's correct.
So I'm concerned that there was, I don't want to say negligence, that's not fair, but, you know, that maybe some of this wasn't quite ahead of time. Does anyone could comment on that, maybe?
I think it was caught.
For example, I know with parks, you know, with the, you call Castle Park, I call it regardless. I know there's always maintenance on that and people looking, but I'm just a little surprised that that would have gone downhill. I mean, we were just there last June, we had a Flag Day thing there, it was, you know, I could tell it was getting a little freaky, but I'm surprised it got to that, that point.
I think, I think we want to get to it before it becomes, people are putting their foot through the floorboards and falling over the rails. So we're trying to be proactive. Some of the upper beams, you know, were unsafe, so in order to avoid getting to that point that you're talking about, Fred, it was imperative to...
I think I'm going back further than that. I'm trying to understand why it got to the point where it had to be torn down. I understand why it was torn down, but what led to it being torn down, was there not routine maintenance or was there, or like, all of a sudden, somebody noticed that was in bad shape? I'm trying to understand, all of a sudden it was torn down because of liability issues? I totally understand that.
We'll have to get, we'll...
Torn down. I think that there was a lot of discussion about it, even during the Parks and Rec com plan, because that is where eventually a new pavilion will be, a small one, in that area, but I don't think it was, it's been on our radar for a while, and I think if Public Works could do whatever to keep it going, then they would have, and it just got to...
I guess it's all of a sudden not seeing it there, just like, oh my gosh, you know, like, I mean, like I said, I know...
I'll let you know, Fred, I'll get back to, I'll ask Sarah on Public Works and make sure we get the right answers for you.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
I think that was all I had. And the time capsule, you answered that.
The time capsule is important to people, though, Fred. I know you weren't concerned about us opening it, but other, other community members might be, so I wanted to let everybody rest assured. be, so I wanted to let everybody rest assured, no one's tampering with it, it's important to us, too, and we're going to keep it and preserve it and not open it until it's time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have the departmental reports.
Good evening, everyone. Couple little updates on land development and zoning. Well, actually, no update on 1327 Prospect, even though they keep calling every month asking when they can get on agenda. I said, when you resubmit your plans. So it's same thing every month with them. 1500 Pembroke, we're still going over landscaping and sewer issues with the applicant, so that's ongoing. The new land development that came in was for the MERC building at 351 Sumney Town, not the main building, it's an industrial building off of Luis Lane, they're basically replacing it. They came in a month or two ago for a variance for, for a height variance for their generator that's going out with the building, so they actually submitted their land development this month. They're going in front of the planning commission this Wednesday for their first review. We already had consultant review letters, so should be in front of you guys, I'm assuming, the next month or two. And as far as the zoning hearing board applications this month, we just simply have an extension request for 848 Gerard Ave. They received the side yard setback relief, I want to say about a year ago, last April, I believe, so they're just asking for a one-year extension because of financial hardship with the family. And then the other application that was applied for this month for the ZHB was for three parcels on Stony Creek Avenue, three parcels that front on Stony Creek. They don't have an address, they're basically one or two lots off of Broad Street, and they're combining three lots into one, just to put a single family home is the proposal. So even with the combination of those three lots, it's still an undersized lot, so they need to come in for a variance and for a lot with as well. But other than that, that's all I got. Any questions? No? Good.
Fred has one in the back.
Yeah, they're just, we're still working on landscaping and sewer issues, that's all. Yep. Yep. Anything else?
Thank you. Next up, Nick.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a couple of updates on some projects in the township this week. So for the 2025 Roads Program, the project was rebid after some issues with the, with the first round of bidding. That project's on the agenda tonight for award, and once we get that award, we can get started on putting together contracts, and we'll get right rolling on, on scheduling that work. I also have an update for Haynes Run, if Megan has the deliverables, we've actually got some visuals tonight for it. They've been, you know, ripping right through that project. We actually were able to go out and a couple months ago, we sent our drone out there to fly over the stream to see the pre-construction conditions, which is the bottom, and just a few weeks ago, we sent the drone back out, or last week, we sent the drone back out there to show what the stream looks like right now. So as you can see, we've really widened the stream. If you look closely on the top screen, you can actually kind of see the original stream and how much it's widened since then. They were able to clear a lot of that, to widen that stream channel, to really increase the capacity of the flow, so once we get these larger storms, it'll be able to handle them a lot better. And they've also regraded those banks all the way through. They've gone through half a mile of stream bank grading at this point, and they're going back through right now to put through, put down the live stakes and the native vegetation plantings. And we expect this project to be mostly wrapped up within the next few weeks, and then they're going to have to come back, as we've discussed, in the fall to, to do the fall plantings. I'm not sure if, Megan, do you have the animated image on there as well? Ah, okay, well, I'll have to send that one around. There is a satellite image as well that was from a few months back, and then just from a couple of weeks ago, that kind of overlays the exact same point on the satellite image from once, from one view to the other, from pre-construction to the current construction. And it's pretty stark, as you can see from the, from the flyover, but this project's moved along really nicely. The contractor's done a great job of, you know, really pushing this project through, even though early on, we had some snow issues, there's been a lot of rain lately, but they've been able to stay out there and keep the project moving. So that's our update for this week. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think this project's really, really going to be a big benefit for the township, and it's really going to reduce the amount of flooding in that area, especially near the wastewater treatment plant.
I don't have any questions, it's just very evident from the narrow, the bottom screen, very narrow to that wide, even as you go into the, around the edges and the triangle part, they did a lot of work.
Yeah, you can kind of see, like I was saying, in that top image.
Yeah.
Where the, the original stream was, there's the outline right there, and how much they've widened the stream channel there. So the amount of water that's going to be able to flow through there is, that water was still moving its way down to the West Hickin, it was just taking alternative routes that were either causing devastation at the wastewater treatment plant, or pushing debris down into the West Hickin, blocking things up further. So now it'll be able to take channels that are much more efficient and much safer for the surrounding area.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other comments?
President Carter, we just received a response from Sarah Prebus answering Fred's question about the gazebo, so if you'll indulge me, I'll read the response. There's a gentleman named John Chabala, who had taken care of the gazebo for the past 30 years, since it's been put up and took very good care of it, but as noted, everything has a useful life, and the useful life of our gazebo has reached the end, and it would have cost $60,000 to redo it. The company that, that we purchased it from no longer makes the parts that fit the gazebo, so we weren't able to get slats or wood for it. Last year, we had a total of one rental in the gazebo, so people are really no longer using it for any rental purposes, and it was Flag Day rental that I think, Fred, you were talking about. And she noted that, yeah, there was, there were some boards that were unsafe, so that explains the, the history of it. It's reached its useful life. They don't make the parts for it anymore, so it was time for it to go, especially given that we received one rental in the past year.
Next up, number nine. I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff department reports. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have any board comments?
I have a few comments. First, I'd like to thank all the department heads for these reports. They take a lot of time, and putting them together for us is really appreciated. I just saw Brian before the meeting and thanked him for all of, all of his hard work with that one, and to everybody else zoning codes, everybody. And I'd like to make one note about my favorite thing that I read in the reports, and it came from Chief Duffy. That was really sweet, that the woman whom one of our officers helped bake cookies and brought them over as a thank you. We have the best residents, so that was really, that was really nice, but that's all I wanted to say. Just, I appreciate everything that goes into these reports.
Thank you. Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 10, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioner work session meeting minutes of March 3, 2025. Can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioner business meeting minutes of March 10, 2025. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation for Arbor Day. Can I have a second? We have a motion and a second. We have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 13, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation for Library Week from April 6 to April 12. Can I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 14, I'd like to make a motion to approve the separation agreement with employee number 02. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up is zoning and planning. As was previously stated, Rebecca is not feeling well. Number 15, a motion to approve the consent to enter property agreement for Dickerson Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 15, I'd like to make a motion to approve the work waiver request from chapters 113-1 and 124-5 for extended work hours and Sunday work on WP41 Research Facility daily from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday work, April 28 through July 27, select Sundays only. Can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 17, I'd like to make a motion to approve the escrow release number one to Better Living Homes for the enclave at Anglicy. Anglicy, 825 Morris Road, in the amount of $101,991. Can I have a second? I have a motion and a second. We have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 18, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final escrow release for 500 Shear Street to David Caracosa in the amount of $3,834.85. Can I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Turn the meeting over now to Commissioner Hall and Public Safety.
Thank you, President Carter. So recently, our police pension and VIBA board met, and we decided that it has been quite some time since we issued an RFP for investment management, custody, and retiree payment services for the plans. So the committee recommends an RFP to ensure that the township receives a competitive rate and the best possible services for these plans. I'd like to make a motion to approve an RFP for investment management, custody, and retiree payment services for the police pension and VIBA plans.
We have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? You have to come up, you have to come up to the microphone.
Are employees that have been retired from the township also made aware of any changes to this? Does that affect anything that they're currently being provided as part of any pension or plan?
No, this is for the police pension and VIBA.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was thinking more of the retirement fund.
Right, and it's just the, it's just a request for proposals.
Oh, I understand what an RFP is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 20, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding with Officer number 25.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 21, in accordance with the civil service rules, we are a part of consortium of police departments that conducted a written examination and a physical agility test for entry-level police officers. From the list of people that passed both tests, we interviewed 23 applicants. Then of those 23 applicants, we passed four, and then two of those withdrew within less than a week. Hiring officers, as you can tell, has become a very competitive, and even more so in a consortium test. As such, to ensure that we would not lose the remaining two candidates to other police departments, they were high on other lists, conditional offers were made to one candidate on March 20th and the other candidate March 25th. Information about the remaining two candidates is confidential at this time. I would like to make a motion to ratify conditional offers of employment to two police officer candidates.
We have a motion, can I have a second? So moved. We have a motion and a second. You have any board comments?
Linda Smith, 815 McIntosh Way. I just was wondering why we're hiring more police officers? Is there an increase in crime, or is it just that, some retirements, or?
A little bit of both. A couple of years ago, we did a study that said that we, according to how many residents are in Upper Gwinnett, we should have a ratio, and we're trying to get to that ratio.
Okay, so it's because we have more residents that we're hiring more police officers?
Well, we also have retirees.
And retirees. Okay, all right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, thank you, President Carter. Well, I was going to do a little, another, a second shout out to our assistant township, Megan Weaver. As we, as President Carter shared earlier, it had a lot to do with her tenacity, that we were able to finally get some information about SEPTA. And in my neighborhood in Gwinnettale, Pico had done a lovely project where they had hired contractors, and they had left like five lovely piles of bricks and rocks, and they, they covered them with tarp, but it had been plus six months that they'd been sitting there. So the residents were getting a little bit frustrated, and so Megan reached out to her contact, and she reached out on a Wednesday, and by Friday, the contractors were back, and they had removed them all, cleaned them up, planted grass, and it looked fantastic. So I just wanted to use this opportunity just to share, you know, Megan and a lot of our staff members do all of this behind the scenes, and we don't really, we don't notice it, we just kind of take it for granted, but really, without them, it would be a huge difference in our township. So, thank you, Assistant Manager, Megan Weaver.
And now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Mall, Public Works, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, President Carter. First, I'd like to say that it was a great pleasure to join some of my fellow commissioners, President Carter and Commissioners Hall and McNaney, and North Wales Mayor Neil McDivitt, to help the Norgwin baseball and softball Hawks and Lady Hawks kick off their baseball and softball seasons for their opening day this past weekend. So good luck to those young men and women, and we look forward to hearing good things from them, just like we did a couple of weeks ago. While I'm at it, I wanted to plug a couple of our great events that we have coming up in our Parks and Recreation Department, as many of you already probably. Uh, as many of you already probably know, April 14th to 17th is our unplugged week. And during that week, on the 15th, there's going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony in an open house for our Rexdale, uh, park, uh, that's newly renovated. April 22nd, Tuesday, is Earth Day, so please come out and help us celebrate Earth Day. May, I'm sorry, April 28th, Monday, is our annual golf outing. That's gonna be held at Cedar Brook Country Club. And, uh, Saturday, May 3rd, is our Annual Unity for Kindness Festival. So, please help us, please come out and, uh, help us celebrate that as well. With that, I would like to, you'll see Agenda Item number 22. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 Stormwater CIPP Project by SWR in the amount of $342,565.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Agenda Item number 23. Making a motion to approve Resolution 10-2025, C2P2 Grant Application for Whittaker Park Improvement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments for Whittaker Park?
Megan, could you just click on the, um, is that one of the public? There's a, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. Big difference than it is now. Thank you, Megan.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, President Carter. Agenda Item 24. Motion to approve the bid for equipment rental and labor for various stormwater projects to Floyd G. Hirsch, Inc., in the amount of $317,240.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, President Carter. Agenda Item 25. Motion to approve the concession stand lease with Little's Ice Cream and Water Ice.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments?
I have one. I just wanted to say that I'm so excited, um, we're so excited to have Little's come back, but we are also so excited, I'm so excited that the Park and Rec Department is installing an air conditioner. I don't know if anybody has ever been inside of that stand when it gets warm outside, but it is brutal. Um, and I cannot imagine how Boston-style for so many years, and now Little's survives that every year. So, I was ecstatic when I saw that there's an air conditioner coming. That's all I wanted to say.
Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda Item number 26. Motion to approve the SBMP Operation and Maintenance Agreement for 1621 Kristen Circle.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. You have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda Item 27. Motion to approve the contract with J.J. Kane Auction to sell Parks and Recreation equipment.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? Come on up.
Yeah, I was just wondering what kind of equipment was being sold? Is it just, we have a surplus of equipment? Or is it just old equipment that's unable to be repaired or used?
So, this would be surplus equipment. We also use munisabid for the larger things, like our vehicles, but we have other smaller things that we have in surplus that's no longer needed that previously we, we would scrap because it's hard to get funds from munisabid. So, this is just another added way for us to be able to get money for anything that we no longer need.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, um, Linda, that was, um, we include all of that too, um, for next, um, on the agenda. Um, if you click that on, Megan, it explains everything in the budget impact 42. Just a little bit more way to get information.
Thank you for that reminder, Commissioner McNaney.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda Item 28. Motion to authorize the advertisement of the consortium bid for heating oil number two.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda Item 29. Motion to approve change order number 23 for the West Prospect Drainage Improvement Project, Phase One, reducing the contract $24,883.72.
Is that change order?
You said 23, is it 3 or 24?
Change order number three.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, President Carter. The next two agenda items will require a roll call vote. And Agenda Item 30. We're making a motion to approve payment number three to NJS Concrete for the West Prospect Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $9,370.23.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You have any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, can you do the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda Item number 31. Motion to approve payment number two to Land Tech Enterprises for the Haynes Run Streambank Restoration Project in the amount of $491,470.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Nick, Nick, that's the one we just talked about. Any public comments? Deanna, can you do a roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, President Carter. And finally, uh, in my section, Agenda Item 32. Motion to approve the bid award to GNB Construction Group for the 2025 Roads Program in the amount of $1,047,985.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Back to me. Wastewater Treatment. Number 33. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 09-2025, the pretreatment fees for 2024. Can I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 34. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 11-2025, the CFA Grant Application for 2026 INI remediation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to approve the electrical quote from BSI, Inc., for the gate replacement project in the amount of $9,950. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the installation quote from Durstine, Inc., for the gate replacement project in the amount of $50,000, $50,800. Can I have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a feed pump and spare parts from Giger Pumps in the amount of $9,439.92. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You have any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, can you do a roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. For the good of all, anybody have any other comments, questions, comments? Thank you all for coming out on this rainy night. Be safe and have a good evening. This meeting's adjourned.